Good evening, everyone. Call of Brandon's Select Board Meeting of June 14th, 2021 to order. It's nice to meet together in person. I want to thank you all for being here tonight. Thanks to those who are participating by Zoom also. We can see you on the monitor. And I believe you can see all of the board and the town manager on the monitor as well. So we'll try this hybrid participation meeting tonight, and I believe it's going to go well. I want to thank the town manager, Dave Atherton, and our town IT director, Bill Moore, for obtaining the technology and setting it up and doing the practice runs so that we could make this successful. So thanks to you two gentlemen. We're going to have the Board of Sewer Commissioners meeting first, and then the Select Board meeting, and then the Liquor Control Commissioners meeting. So the Select Board is going to stand at recess immediately, and I'll call to order the Brandon Board of Sewer Commissioners. The agenda was posted. What's the pleasure of the board regarding the agenda as it was posted?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as it was posted.
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second. Any changes to be made to the sewer commissioners' agenda tonight? If not, all in favor of the agenda as posted, say aye. Aye, that's unanimous. Item two, approval of the minutes of October 26, 2020, as presented by the Recording Secretary. Motion in a second. Any errors or omissions in the minutes as they were prepared by Charlene Bryan? None heard, all in favor of approval of the minutes as presented, say aye. Aye, that's unanimous. Item two, sorry, item three, we have some purchase orders. Ask the town manager to introduce the purchase orders. Or I see the chief operator is here tonight too.
So these are just chemicals that Steve puts out a bit annually that we use. Responder and calling for sludge and processing. Pretty explanatory on the indexes, so. Any questions? He is here to answer.
Steve, I do want to thank you. Every year you have this task of putting all these purchase orders together, and every year you present it in the most clear way I could imagine. And we appreciate the information that kind of lets us know what each of these individual components does. You give us a history of what the pricing has been. So I want to thank you for how you present these to us. Appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions for Steve on any of the individual purchase orders? Or do you want to do them as a class or individually, whatever you'd like to do?
I'll make a motion to approve all of them.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve all the purchase orders. There's one to Allen Engineering for sodium hypochlorite, one to Holland Company for sodium illuminate, one to Holland Company for sodium bisulfite, one to Casella for trucking, Casella Waste Management for trucking, and one to the city of Rutland for processing of the sludge. Motion in a second. Is there discussion? It's all so clear. All in favor of approval of the purchase orders as presented, say aye. Aye, that's unanimous. Item four.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second to adjourn the Board of Sewer Commissioners. It's not debatable. All in favor, say aye. Aye, that's unanimous. Thanks very much. So at this time, we're ready for the Select Board. Call the Select Board back to order at 7:04. Is there a motion regarding the Select Board agenda for the night?
I'll make a motion to remove number five from the agenda because it was already taken care of.
Okay, we'll remove any objection to that? No. We'll remove number five because the board action already took care of that item. Any other changes to be made?
Yeah, I like that. Consider reinstating interest and penalties going with tax sewer accounts.
Okay.
Since the governor listed everything.
I'll just put that for you.
I think that's a great idea. Okay, so this will be the new number five to consider reinstating the penalties and interests on delinquent tax and sewer accounts. Any other changes to be made? If not, all in favor of the agenda as we've just amended it, say aye. Aye, any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Item two, approval of the board minutes of May 24th. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes as they were submitted. Any discussion, any errors or omissions? None heard, all in favor of approval of the minutes of May 24th, say aye. Aye, that's unanimous. Item three, the town manager's report, Mr. Atherton.
Yes, my report for the week of May 31st to June 7th. Segment six, I have repairs, replacement, continue in the downtown area. Final walk-through is still planned for June 21st. I've applied for the fiscal year '22 MRGP grant. This is the annual grant that funds our ground ditching and runoff requirements. Looks like we're eligible for another 20 grand this coming year. We'll be receiving, as of today, $390,000 in ARPA funds. This will be sent to us in two installments within a 12-month period. DPW has rented an excavator to complete ditching, drainage, and cover work on Florence Road, Hyphen Road, and this is in preparation for paving in August. Held a bid opening on May 28th for the Quonix for Park and Ride, just below here. Lowell Landscaping was the low bidder, and we're looking at completing this in mid-July of '12. One other thing I wanted to add, if you guys spend downtime and see this occur in front of the Brandon Art Still, this is not where it should be. There was a truck that was backing into one of the businesses down there. Somehow that hung up on our curb and then backed over and pulled it out of the ground. Actually just sent out the letter for the insurance company today. I've been on the phone with them since last week, and they're reimbursing us the full amount to get that replaced. I'm hoping we can get it done before the final walkthrough, but P-Trans is aware of it, so. Yeah. Rec Department knows, Bill's got a lot on this one. Summer's almost here. Our camps have been filled up from soccer to cheer, sewing, swimming. Our camps have been graded and more that are going up every day. All registrations can be found at brandonrec.com. We were disappointed to hear that our summer matters grant was a $4-plus million summer camp grant that were not able to be funded. Vermont Department of Health received 7.4 under requests. Our partnership with RNA issue looks to expand the possibility of Brandon Recs calling right coordinating a morning supplement to recovery camps they're offering for July 5th through August 6th. We're closing, we're close to making a cooperative agreement. The first Brandon Rec job fair was an unmitigated success thanks to Brandon Inn and the Vermont Department of Health for working with Brandon Safety Maven Death Voice to set up a vaccination plan in conjunction with an event that connects folks with our 19 local employers. Utter Valley Local Tech Schools have got this information in the hands of juniors and seniors, and we'll be back with one in the fall. The Brandon Rec Brandon Area Toy Project, American Legion, Everyone Needs collaboration ended on May 28th. Volunteers donated over 1,300 hours in all kinds of weather to help make this a cool program work in our area. Thanks to Harriet, Vermont Farmer's Food Center, calling right, Dallas Lab, and Peggy Moore, that's Quonville, Sue Danforth, and Post 55, Aaron Tucker. And of course, the Lance Club is working with Everyone Needs to get meals out of the National School for a Month of June. Literacy Day is Monday, June 28th. I asked to work from 4 to 7. The Brandon Area Toy Project, Brandon Rec, and the Brandon Free Public Laboratory are collaborating to make sure kids have books to read this summer. The state of Vermont has announced the 2021 Buildings and Grounds Grant Program, and will be writing a grant to support improvements to the town hall that will allow controlled access to make it down to their bathrooms, public restrooms for the downtown. Something we've been talking about pretty. Brand Craft Fair, sold at Estabro from June 5th, were a tremendous success. Eighty-five plus vendors were happy with the impressive amount of people that showed up in spite of the oppressive heat. Dog Park Committee Chair Karen Trail will be organizing a Wednesday market fest that will run on the nights of the Brandon Area Chamber of Commerce. Musics at the Riverbound Summer Concert Series in July and August. That's one of my favorite track programs.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Atherton and Mr. Moore. Any questions for the town manager from the board? Mr. Galloway, start with you.
Yeah, I have a few little things, well, and I guess not so little. I'm curious about the ARPA money and what kind of process we have for how that's doing, what we're going to do with it.
Someone talked about that at the last meeting, that we were looking at putting it into infrastructure, such as Union Street sewer and water upgrades. That was one of them. Didn't we discuss this in the last?
I wondered if we were going to have a more specific conversation about the amounts and kind of how we're going to use them.
Sure.
Or if it's already been decided, we might dismiss that.
No, nothing's been decided. I think that we're waiting to have the check in hand before any decisions.
That's what I recall as well. So, and I thought there was some suggestion that involving the public in some way might be helpful to have the sense that it's kind of everybody in the community has some kind of input into using this community resource. Does it make sense to think about possibly having a community forum of some kind? It might be a Zoom session or an in-person?
That's up to you guys.
Would you, would you feel like it needs to be a separate thing? Or would you feel like we could warn it on the next meeting and just, you know, say, ARPA money discussion kind of thing?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's probably smart to wonder about whether it could be a big thing and people might want to really be here to talk and have more to say, or whether it might be a small thing.
Sorry to interrupt. I think one thing to remember is this, we can't use this to, it's kind of limited what we can spend it on. Basically, if it qualifies for clean water drinking water funds, we can use it for that. We can't use it to pave roads unless we're doing, you know, infrastructure work underneath it that we have to pave at the end. So it is kind of limited as to what we can do with it, which maybe most folks aren't aware of.
Well, right, so getting information out early seems helpful. So if people did come to talk about it, they would have some idea of, you know, what the scope is and what the range of options might be. But I kind of like the idea of trying to include the community in the discussion in some way, kind of get a buy-in. So yeah, maybe at the next Select Board meeting we could warn it.
I think that if we did it that way, you know, you'd be able to gauge whether in fact there was interest in the public about putting ideas forth or whether they just want the board to kind of be responsible with it. Okay, you know what I mean? Yeah, I mean, if it turns out that there's a ton of people with a ton of different ideas, maybe we would need to have a separate meeting, but we could find that out.
We can't just toss it in our general plan. The only way that that could be done is if we show that we had significant losses due to COVID, which we really don't, I mean, an interest penalty, but that doesn't count. You know, we stayed, we stayed pretty, pretty good through this, so. That's the thing, it's really, it's kind of like sort of a grant, you know, that we've got a, we've got a show for everything that we've documented, documented, documented. There's really not much leeway. Here's what we can spend it on, and this is definitely what you can't spend it on. So it's not a payroll thing, or like I said, we can't pay roads with it.
Yeah, I think that'd be really helpful to just have a clear definition of kind of what the boundaries are and see if people have, you know, input once we have the boundaries clear with set.
Others on the board, any, any different opinions or endorsement of that idea of maybe putting it on the next board meeting as an agenda item?
We've still got to figure out what it's, what it's going to be, what the grant's for, all right? I mean.
It's not a grant, so we're getting, we're getting this $390,000.
But it's for, it's for drinking water, potable water, and.
So whatever project we pick would be something that we would present to drinking water or clean water as a project. So I'm thinking after our next Select Board meeting, when we discuss a lot of the sewer stuff that I sent, Patrick sent you, we might find, we might find a place to use it for, and it would really work well there. So, yeah, I mean, we've done enough of these clean water, drinking water ones. We know what obviously, you know, clean water is sewer and drinking water is drinking water. So those are really the projects that would, we could use to spend the money on. Or a loss of progress, which like, yeah, we don't really have.
I mean, maybe the point of the next, you know, being on the next agenda item is just to maybe clarify a little bit about what that project might be, you know, if you have a short list. It sounds like you have a short list, Dave, of things that you're thinking of.
So, yeah, Steve and I were just talking about this before the meeting. We definitely have some, some spots on the West Water that we'd like to get done sooner than later.
Could it be used for a capital project that's not directly sewer or water? No.
No, you mean like paving?
No, like a building.
Um, we could do a building.
Like if we, I have just the smallest reservation about sewer and water because not everybody directly benefits from a sewer and water connection.
Yeah, it's up to you guys.
Could it be used for Wi-Fi?
I sent you all of the information from the.
Yeah, you sent us the packet.
Yeah, and my sense when I saw it was that there was a, it was a broader sense than what you're, you were telling me now, and I mean, and that's why I guess I was looking for the possibility that there might be a broader set of options for how we might spend the money. And as Seth just pointed out, so possibly in ways that would help, you know, more of the town in general and less a subset. And at this point, it's just exploratory. I don't have something that I'm pitching.
Well, I think there were some other things in there, like if they wanted to do affordable housing, $390,000, something like that.
Well, that's why I was thinking about building, you know, like $390,000 to get you a chunk of a building. Like we talked about some improvements at the highway. You know, maybe a small building with a shower and, you know, all that kind of stuff.
We talked about replacing the garage or something.
Talked about the garage.
Yeah, you can look in the more if you want.
So maybe, maybe next agenda item, we will have more of a discussion on this, you know, next meeting?
Did you have some other things?
Yeah, I just have one other small thing compared to that, $390,000. A couple of people have come up and asked me about the signs in Central Park from Holy Brothers that are on the side of the road. And I got to say to start with, I'm a huge fan of Holy Brothers. I go there regularly, and I like their food. But I'm curious about the folding signs, especially near the intersection. My own feeling is, is that that intersection is already a busy one, and to have signs along there is probably not helpful to drivers.
So, yep, I agree with you, and I think that whoever has come to you should probably have help designing administrator about signs because that's what we pay Jeff to do. Signs are not supposed to be on property other than your own.
Okay.
So.
I mean, we did, we did let that march for.
Well, we didn't let go that far. We did allow on-premise signs to be, you know, like the banners and stuff through segment six, which is good until June 21st, so. But off-premise signs are a little different.
So is that something you could just suggest Jeff take us again?
Yeah, but it might be worth still, like, I'll see, well, I won't see Jeff tomorrow, so I don't believe it. It would be a good idea for that person, whoever, to call, or even if you want, call, call the zoning administrator. I just, that's sort of the, you know, the, I hate to say it, but like the chain of command on that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That would definitely be Jeff's expertise. So.
And then the last thing I have is I'm curious if there's any Wi-Fi update.
It's Bill Moore, recreation. So I've been talking with the contractor, Justin, from your IT. And he's supposed to give us some more numbers. Guys asked for, make sure, spoke about some recurring costs and pinning down on the recurring costs for that, so. He's working on that and, you know, the possibility of some. Yeah, just a question that I would go on, with the possibility of maybe we could expand outside the downtown, what those costs would be, what kind of fixed cost, what kind of fixed costs that we need inside the town offices to make this happen? Because we bring gig into the town offices, we're going to need a network switch, we need other things. So, you know, pinning down more of those things, so.
Does it make sense to bring that up as an agenda item next year?
Yes, I think that would be wise. I think we plan on anyway, when we're ready for this one, then we'll just do that. Great, thank you, Zouan, I'll be getting you. Yeah, that's all I have space.
Thank you, Tim. Mike?
No.
Brian?
Nothing.
Any members of the public with any questions for the town manager tonight? Anybody in the room here present? Anybody on Zoom? I don't see anything in the chat, but if anybody wants to use the raise your hand feature on Zoom, this would be a good time. Tim's keeping an eye on the screen, and I'll keep an eye on the screen as I can. We do have public comment available on every agenda item, so chime in at your pleasure, folks on Zoom and folks here in the room. Item four is pub, thank you, Dave, for your report and for fielding the questions. Item four is public comment and participation. These would be items not on the agenda. How about folks on Zoom? Anybody with items that you don't see on the agenda that you'd like to bring up at the board meeting tonight? And if not, folks here in the room? Yes, sir, we have Chief Kilpeck.
Hello, Tom Kilpeck, speaking as the Brandon Rental Housing Code Officer. Present my annual, am I an annual?
Thank you.
So far, 2021, performed 24 certificate of occupancy inspections on rental housing units. In comparison to 2020, there was 73 total inspections done, which is still lower than previous years. Currently on the books, showing 488 rental units in the town of Brandon. Those range from a single-bedroom apartment to a full single-family home. Annually, rental housing units are required to do an annual statement of compliance. That is their self-inspection, that they are still code compliant if the, if they have not had any turnover of tenants and received a certificate of occupancy in that period as well. Nonetheless, that annual statement of compliance is where the only rental housing fees are involved. There is a $25 per unit fee annual that pretty much covers what's the income for the rental housing. This year, the, I pushed out the annual statement due date to June 1st from, from back in January with COVID. Extending that out seems that there was a lot of people who were not moving around and a lot of tenants that were not allowing people, outside people into their homes. And most of the property owners were not interested in going out and doing physical inspection on site if they weren't needed. So we pushed that out to June 1st. As of June 1st, we have 292 of the 488 that have been returned in compliance. So that's, we've got 59%. The 41% will be receiving notices of delinquency for their annual statements of compliance in the near future. As a town health inspector, town health officer required to take animal bite complaints from medical facilities. It's a major reports animal bite, out of that. Received, we, four of those so far this year, and only one of those was significant that the owner of the animal actually had the animal put down. And as the town 911 coordinator, I've received a few requests for updated 911 addresses and new, there were a couple of new shortcuts for forcing new numbers to be measured and applied. So taking care of that, there's been contact with the the person from the state that inputs all of that data into the system. So anybody, it's actually public information. Anybody that wants to go and see the 911 maps, they're, they're all available.
I don't have a question. I do want to thank you for doing three different jobs that are all very important, and they all have a certain level of detail involved that requires, you know, a lot of care on your part. And I appreciate that you've stepped up to do these for the town. We know that, you know, you have your own business, you have a family, you're the fire chief, and it's, it's really, I think I can express on behalf of the board, we're grateful for you doing these other positions of health inspector, rental code officer, and 911 coordinator. So are there questions for Tom in any of those roles?
Just echoed it, thank you.
Even goes on the smallest desk in the office.
The smallest desk in the office.
Yeah, we keep putting it in the chair. We'll get tired of our chairs.
Tom, do you know, or do we keep track of, in those 488 rental units, do we keep track of like how many individuals live in those altogether, like collectively?
I could compile those numbers, but no, I don't. I mean, there, there, there are, there are plenty of those that I have not been to physically inspect in the last three years. So this is just my three-year anniversary of doing this. There are still plenty that I have not had to go and do a physical certificate of occupancy inspection. The ones that I have done have all been measured. There's so many square feet per person, which is in the, in our code, not the state code, but in town's code, it's 150 square feet per person. So, yeah, I mean, I could get the number of what the maximum capacity would be, but that doesn't mean that, you know, you could have a two-bedroom and you're going to only do one person living there.
Sure. It was more curiosity question more than anything else.
So, I mean, the other thing, the one thing I do have is throughout that 488, it comes down to roughly a dozen property owners that cover about 40% of that number. So we have some large numbers. There's 79 units that are village under one property owner. There's 18 more on another property owner between, and let's say, between a dozen companies that hold the bulk of, of the, the units, the apartment units.
Thank you. Other comments, questions, anybody from the public? All right, thank you again, Tom. Other public comment and participation? Anything else not on the agenda tonight that should come up at the board meeting? Bill Moore?
Bill Moore, Parade Committee Chair, our Ben, Ben Stacey Celebration Committee Chair. Let everyone know that the celebration is happening downtown Brandon. One day, as opposed to two days like we've done in the past, everything will be downtown. Parade starts at 10, shows start at 9. We'll have music, food, fun, parade, and the fireworks. The street dance will happen at 6:30. Fireworks will be shot off on Mill Lane, again, all downtown. Play a parade.
July 3rd, Saturday, July 3rd?
Yes.
Parade at 10? This is, the parade at 10 is the first event of the day.
First event of the day, and then after that, we'll have music at the park, we'll have daily games out behind the Brandon Inn. We've got the great duck race. We retire the balls, remember we have little rubber ducks that will go into the water at 3 o'clock. We have, we have bands, food, fun, vendors. We got the street dance, it's gonna be water, fireworks at 9:27.
Fantastic, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you, thank you, and thanks to everybody on your committee. I know there's a year's worth of work that comes to fruition in one long glorious day. So thank you all for doing that, and thanks to your committee members, Bill. Other public comment, participation, items not on the agenda? If not, we'll go on to the new item five, which is consider reinstatement of delinquent penalties and interests on tax and sewer accounts. I believe this is in relation to the governor's announcement that the state of emergency will expire, in fact, tomorrow. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
And we had initially passed this saying that we would. And we had initially passed this saying that we would do it through the state of emergency. So what's the pleasure of the board regarding reinstatement, delinquent tax and penalties, sorry, delinquent penalties and interest on tax and sewer accounts?
I move that we are reinstated.
As of tomorrow? Motion and second to reinstate delinquent penalties and interest on tax and sewer accounts. Does the town treasurer have any comment?
Well, I just wondered, like, when do you, do you want to start doing it, like, on July 15th? When, we usually do it on the 15th of every month. Does that make sense?
I would do it tomorrow. Like, that's when we, we said a year ago, we were going to do it through the state of emergency. And he said the state of emergency is over tomorrow.
Does that make it harder for you to come to?
Well, I'm on vacation, so it's all in the end. She'll do whatever.
She's a smart cookie.
She'll do whatever she has to do. So I'm just thinking of, I mean, we get calls, four, five, six calls every day about what school balances are. And obviously, that's all of their balances are, mostly mortgage companies and stuff. So they'll just, just get a second bill.
Other considerations? Other input? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That's unanimous. Thank you. So item six, then, consider the Brandon Energy Committee mission statement and ongoing tasks. Dave, can you introduce this to us? Who, who brought this to us?
I can. Tim Giles actually has, he wrote this draft, this semester.
Tim, do you want to talk on that?
Yeah, briefly.
Thanks.
I had a nice meeting with two of the four energy committee members, Matt and Jack. And we talked about the energy committee and the Brandon and the needs Brandon has going in the future. And so I pinned this together and then with this draft, I sent it out to the all four committee members, which includes Edna Sutton and Lowell Rasmussen and Matt and Jack. And and they endorsed this. They, they agree that this is something that they think they can be helpful with and they, they like what I put forward. And just to, for the benefit of people at home, you know, briefly, the idea is that Vermont has a energy goals in 2030 and 2050, and, and they're significant. And each community is going to need to do things to try to help reach those goals. And so I've come up with three tasks, ongoing tasks and a mission statement. And the mission statement is basically that the Brandon Energy Committee should help the town of Brandon do its part to achieve the Vermont Energy Goals. And then the ongoing tasks are to, you know, gather data, heating, you know, transportation, lighting and appliances. Organize community outreach activities. Recently, they, before COVID, just before COVID, they had planned on doing a major event at the high school where they were going to have electric cars and they were going to have a lot of vendors come in. And it was really going to be a pretty big thing to help the community learn about ways to save energy. And then, and then the third one was to, the idea that they would, you know, keep their eye out for ways that the town might make policy to achieve our goals in a better way. And so they might make suggestions, things that they might find other communities are doing that we might learn from or grants that they might find that we could benefit from. With this, with the emphasis on suggestions. It's not that I'm suggesting that the energy committee have authority on their own, but they're just kind of going to be doing a lot of legwork because they have an interest in this stuff. And then the last thing I would say is that, you know, that last line of the thing is that the, the energy committee doesn't have authority to spend money. It has the ability to ask for money if it thinks it has a project that needs to be funded, I guess like anybody could do. So that's my introduction.
Thank you for introducing that. Is it, you fine for questions?
Yeah, yeah, please.
So you met with two of the energy committee folks and the other two have seen this?
And they've seen it as well.
Are, are the four of them who are on the board or the energy committee right now, are they, are they all four willing to stay on it? Basically with this as the guideline?
That's my understanding, yes. And, and they would really like to have the announcement of the missing spot tonight. So we can start that process of filling up this seat.
Other questions for Tim? Questions from the public about the energy committee mission statement and ongoing tasks that have been part of the packet tonight and just discussed by a select board member, Tim Giles? No questions, no comments?
Shall I make a motion to endorse this as a board? So the energy committee has clear direction on where they should be going?
I would say that would be in order.
Yeah, I, I make a motion that we that we endorse this statement of mission and ongoing tasks. So the committee has a clear understanding of their responsibilities.
Is there a second regarding the mission statement? Second premise one, just for discussion, I just want to, I want to thank you for all the parts that are, you know, kind of present here. I would maybe just highlight that in the very end, it talks about, you know, incurring expense and requesting funds and stuff. The preferable time to do that would be during the budget building workshops in October, November, December time period and not kind of after town meeting when the budget's already set for the next 18 months. So that, that would be one thing I would just pass along to the energy committee, maybe through the minutes or something non-threatening. Other, other discussion of this? Yeah, Mr. Town Manager.
I didn't tell you guys, the last thing we actually bought a battery powered pushmore for Josh's house. Battery powered weed black too.
Very cool. Was that within budgetary allotment?
It was like $400.
Okay.
The other pushmore died. So it was.
So that's a, so that's a good step. So it's a, and it's the right machine for the job? He likes working with it?
It's nice and light, able to hold batteries, so it stays charged.
Quiet?
It's very quiet. The weed black, which is nice night, you're in front of the weed black all day and it's not.
Great. Other comment, other discussion?
The riding rollers tend to be very, very expensive. I test drove one last summer, about $25,000 or something. Pay $10,000 for it here.
You mean an electric ride mower?
Yeah.
Oh, I know.
Oh, sure.
Do we want to throw something in there to your fist?
It does say on here that there's a five member subcommittee. And I think if, if we can consider this discussion as being an announcement that the position's open, I think that's what they're waiting for to try to cultivate a, a new volunteer.
Yes. So there's a, there's an opportunity to serve on the Brandon Energy Committee. There's a fifth spot that's vacant right now. And this is the official select board announcement that anyone interested should submit a letter of interest to the town manager. Thanks. Ready to vote? All in favor of accepting the Brandon Energy Committee mission statement and ongoing tasks as discussed tonight, say aye. Aye, that's unanimous. Appointments on the development review board for the remainder of a one-year term ending June 30th, 2022. The letter from Jack Schneider, who is an alternate on the development review board, looking to become a full board member.
I'd make motion to make a full board member.
Motion and second, the vacancy is confirmed and all that stuff, the term is correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's nothing pressing between now and 30th, but there's not, there are no meetings warranted. They can be now.
But it's, it's June 30th, 2022, right? So we're basically, we'd be putting him on for, for year. Yeah, yeah. And is this, is this how we've got it in the personnel, in the appointments policy? Like, we don't need to, we've announced this vacancy previously.
Right, well.
Did we not?
Historically, an alternate would just take the person's spot anyways.
At a meeting when, when they're absent. Yep. Great. Any more discussion? All in favor of changing Jack Schneider's status on the development review board from alternate to full board member per his letter of interest through June 30th, 2022, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Thank you, Jack. Item eight, the financial management questionnaire. Town treasurer is here.
So this is the annual financial management questionnaire, which we're required to do annually. It's a good practice because it just gets us thinking about internal controls. One of the issues, again, I think we do this every year and we kind of resolve at the meeting is whether any select board members have attended financial trainings. I did send something out to everybody. I heard back from Tim, who said, I've attended a lot of trainings, but I'm not sure if they're specifically financial. So that question is still unknown. I think what I'm going to do is find out if any of you have attended financial trainings. I'll write your name in the box. I don't have it, that appear.
It's such a vague question, you know, like.
Well, I think talking specifically, specifically BLCT has select board financial training, that's what it's called. And it's about understanding. And the reason this whole thing happened is because there were a number of towns who were taken advantage of by their personnel, specifically treasurers, who were working as in one-person offices who were extending the funds. So the state said, you know, you need to review financial management things annually the board does. And you should then finance the trainings.
So I saw your question in the email. I saw Tim's response to it and my response is basically the same. You know, I've, I've attended the Select Board Institute from the league
Yeah.
more than once, but finances is not a large component of it. It's one of, it's one of a number of components of it. But before that, I was a retired banker. No, I wasn't a retired banker, but I, I worked in banking and I know all about dual control. And I know all about all of those kind of cash.
So I'm going to write this, I'm interested, Giles, to change that to yes.
At least some of us, I know, I know some of us.
And I might add.
And if the league, if the league puts out, you know, a specific select board finance training session, I'm not remembering that that's been announced in recent years. I don't think they've done it in, in a number of years.
It's usually those ones where it was at Bob Hall or whoever, remember, it's also the end of the day. I mean, I remember those.
And maybe even use some coffee beans on it.
Well, I, I appreciate your, your description and your explanation because it, it does help really give the groundwork for the importance of, of a couple of people from the board trying to stay current and relevant and knowledgeable about finances.
Yeah.
And so, so the conversations, so the information you give us, we fully appreciate. And the, and the details of this double oversight, you know, we can follow through with our responsibilities. And so it would be helpful to me if you see one of these trainings come up, if you could particularly flag it and say, this is an example. This is a financial training for select board members, because I, I would make a few different personally.
I'd have to do that.
The, the league should, you guys will get off of the.
I think we do. I'm just trying to help tie the, you know, close the loop here a little bit.
I mean, we, we got some highly specific training ones, like, you know, tax appeal and abatement, you know, workshops.
Right, that's not bad.
That's not really financial. And then we got like the general stuff, but I don't recall like, you know. And, and as you say, I, I think that what the experience has been across Vermont and that the league is probably trying to address would be towns without a town manager, first of all, where the select board is like actually doing the like invoicing and warranting in, at a different level than we're responsible for in Brandon.
Or towns, you know, with the select order, it would be as well as that.
There's just like a budgeting one that comes up once a year.
Yeah. And I feel like it always comes after town meeting, you know, it's new board members, so it's usually around the end of March when they operate typically, but I don't recall seeing this year.
One thing too, it's not like official training, but Sue's been giving you guys quarterly finances. And those are great things to ask questions off of to any of us. Because that's pretty much the tell, the telltale right there of everything. And I think Sue does a really good job of explaining what it is. So we're always.
So I'm going to change that one question to yes and just write a second tender so that I got that going forward. And then you're going to, do you mind popping in something? It's that, or somebody?
Sure, yeah.
It's a good thing to do. It's a good thing. I mean, we go through our audities every year.
Right.
We go through a really extensive thing like this with the auditor.
And then the auditor.
It's always good.
And the auditor comes and talks to us and tells us about, you know, what, what they thought of, you know, as a best practice that they suggested that maybe they didn't observe and things of that nature. So, all right. Thank you for doing this as always. And yeah, if you want to make a little change, we can, we can say we accept that. I don't, I don't think there's any board action required. It just says received by, so. Received. Item nine, the late homestead penalty. What's the pleasure of the board? Some years we've done this. I think last year we did not.
Do we need a motion before we discuss it or?
No, we're small board rules.
Okay. Because I, I would just be curious, especially with Sue being here, whether there's a need for this. It seems like, as I've read this, it's, it's a way for the town to recoup, you know, losses if there's significant hardship because somebody comes in and tries to claim their homestead late. And if we don't actually have losses, it seems unnecessary to have a penalty for this relatively innocuous mistake that some people make.
Well, and it's not always a mistake. It's, it's, people typically file their homestead and they file a return. So some of them are complicated for, maybe entrepreneurs, people with small businesses who tend to file after, or they might file after April 15th, and then they're, they're late. The problem is they get penalized and, and then they don't get homestead.
Well, exactly, exactly. Both of the houses that I worked on, the rehab here in Brandon, there were new homeowners and they didn't know about the homestead. And even though I told them about it and encouraged them, they were late on it. And it just seems like one of those, at least in the cases that I'm thinking of, they were unnecessarily penalized for a, you know, missing a, a minor deadline.
Sue, this, and this is probably not a fair question because it's going to ask you like about years past, because we didn't do this last year, is my recollection.
No, we, there's a couple of years we didn't do it.
But previously we had.
Yeah.
Are we talking about a very small number of people who would be impacted by this? Are we talking about a dozen or more?
It's a small, it's a small number of people. And it's a small amount of money in penalties, it's maybe two grand. And it's maybe it's been two or three people, maybe four.
Who have been penalized for a late homestead.
Yeah, and there's nothing, so just so you understand, like, once we, so we're downloading homesteads on a weekly basis. As soon as people start filing returns, February 1st, basically, we're downloading homestead, homestead, or homestead.
Declaration.
All, all spring. And then when I, when I fill the taxes, then I start that Friday, every, every Monday, I come in every Monday and download the new homestead. So that is, there's nothing, and I do that all the way until November 15th, but it ends. So I'm, it's not doing, I don't feel like I'm doing any of that work necessarily. We just, because I, the payments come, the payment's coming to me, so I, I have to go in and download those all, all as well. So it's not, you know, it's no more work than already doing. I mean, I think, I don't like this penalty. I don't, that's, that's my, I just, it's not a lot of people. And then it has a bad effect on people who either dismissed it or they thought the tax rate maybe because of tax preparer who did it. I, I just, I don't, personally, I don't like it. But a lot of people do. I would, I would encourage you to say no.
Thank you, Sue. Other, other comments? Anybody in the chat? Anybody on the Zoom? Anybody in the room?
I guess a concern would be is if we don't do that, say, then that small number that you're talking about could turn into a really big number.
Well, no, because then they're paying higher taxes. I mean, they're, if they don't, if they don't declare their homestead, they're paying a non-residential tax rate in Brandon, which is higher than the homestead rate. So they're already. in Brandon, which is higher than the homestead rate. So they're already penalized if they don't do the homestead. So.
So there's no deterrent effect.
I also send stuff out. I go to the, um, seniors center and talk to folks there, loan homes. We make, a lot of people don't file tax returns because of security related reports and say, oh, forget your homestead because then you don't file your, but you don't file, yeah. So I really try to make sure people actually do it because it's essential to them.
Other comment, other input?
I, I make, I guess I'd make a motion to say no on this one.
Motion to not, uh, assess a late homestead penalty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. So more discussion? We had a good discussion. Is there more? Any public comment before we vote? Ready to vote? All in favor of, this is a negative motion. Thanks, Tim. All in favor of not assessing late homestead penalty, say aye. Aye. Well, that was unanimous. Good job. Uh, then there's a warrant.
Make motion approved warrant, ninety one thousand, one hundred and sixty eight dollars and sixty eight cents.
Motion for Mr. Coolidge. Is there a second? Second for Mr. Giles. I guess we've been at Brandon Lumber a lot.
Only place in town. Um, we, well, I'll give you a little brief on that. So we did a little bit of work on the deck on the Kennedy Park the last couple of weeks.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, the Thomas' were having a celebration. We put some flowers out there and changed all the caps on the posts. And then nobody noticed, which I was hoping someone would see because it's been brought up for like a year. They look, the Brandon signs of every place on each end of town, some most new posts because they're rotted, so.
Was that us or was that the chamber or was that cooperative? That was us. Okay.
Chamber, it was funny stuff.
I have not noticed those.
I thought the chamber put the original ones up. No?
Well, we kind of got some info on that from, um, on what occurred.
They, they were red, weren't they? Now they're green.
No, they were green before. The Lomotors just took down a green.
You don't have any coming in from seven to three.
Oh, we're not.
No. Seven north, seven south. I, I did notice that you replaced three of the four posts in a cost-saving kind of bush league look.
It's a check nice to be true.
Okay, fine. Timber crosser high, longer side, I get it.
So no, Josh did a good job on it. He, you know, redid the one on the south that needed to be done. Um, that's, you know, just, that's looking nice, so. Yeah, that's, that's why there's a lot of.
Well done. Other questions on the bills? Ready to vote? All in favor of approval of the warrant and the amount given, say aye. 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 Any opposed, say no. That's unanimous. The ayes have it. Item eleven.
Motion here.
Mr. Coolidge moves to adjourn at seven fifty three. Is there a second? Second for Mr. Markowski. It's not debatable. All in favor of adjourning, say aye. Aye. It's unanimous. Before we do the Board of Liquor Control Commissioners, actually, no, let's just go ahead and do it. So at seven fifty three, call the Brandon Board of Liquor Control Commissioners to order. Is there a motion on the agenda?
Motion. Try again.
Motion and a second from Coolidge and Wyman to adopt the agenda. Any changes to be made? All in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye. 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 None opposed? Uh, is there any objection to taking item two, approval of the minutes? Item three, review of special event permits approved by the town clerk. And item four, approval of a catering permit, um, for Heritage Family Credit Union Grand Opening at fourteen, thirteen forty Franklin Street tomorrow afternoon. Any objection to taking those as a consent agenda? No objection. All in favor of the consent agenda, which is items two, three, and four on the posted agenda, say aye. 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 That's unanimous. Item five. Motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor, say aye. 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 Seven fifty four, unanimous. So before we say, uh, farewell, are there any announcements that anybody needs to make? Any suggestions for the good of the community? Yes, Tim?
Yeah, I would just wish Dave a good vacation. Let, know you're getting away to a good place. Um, and I guess let the town know that the chief's going to give you, the town member, where you're going.
Yeah, I mean, everyone that I've talked to most time knows, and I've heard some like form and stuff, so it'll be fine.
I hope you can wait from the town business for a week wherever you go.
It's going to rain all week.
I don't care.
Don't make a bitter difference.
I don't care for raining on us.
Yes, sir.
I can't remember what dress, so I'm going to be literally dressed as my pop-up vaccination clinic at Central Park this Friday, four to seven. So if you haven't gotten your vaccination.
Thank you, Bill. Any other announcements? No. Okay. So, um, thank you. I do, I just want to say it's great to get together again in person and do the things that we got used to doing and have been away from for a while. So thank you all for being here tonight. Thanks to the board members and Charlene and Dave and Bill. And thanks to those who are participating through Zoom. I hope that, uh, we'll find out whether the video and the sound was, was good. Um, if you have any complaints, Bill Moore is your man and you can let him know, let him know how he did. Thanks very much, everybody. Have a good night.